Good evening, I'd like to call the Central Valley Board of Education's November 12th work session to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic. Cam, will you please call roll?
Dr. Ambrose.
President.
Mr. Anteline.
Here.
Mr. Bloom. Mrs. DeSanto.
Here.
Mr. McDonald.
Here.
Mr. Moad.
Here.
Mr. O'Neal.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Ms. Phil Castro.
Here.
Thank you.
Yes, the board held an executive session immediately prior to tonight's meeting to discuss student matters and to receive information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comments on agenda items.
We have a couple of student presentations in recognition this evening from the high school, Mr. Bakova Can and Mr. Fiedler, and then Mr. Strakone has something to present. Mr. V.
This month, the Technology Association of Pennsylvania awarded the high school tech ed department with a Program of Excellence Award based on offerings and projects they provide to our students. Mr. Fiedler, along with Riley and Brooklyn Wardell, are here to talk to you about our tech ed program and how it provides a meaningful outlet for students in our high school.
Hey, I have a slides on the screen just for visual aid. So primarily, I was asked initially to come for the BOTS IQ program to tell you about that. I'm Mr. Fiedler, Bill Fiedler, by the way. So. So BOTS IQ program, we've been involved for 19 years. We got started 2007. So over on the left side is the original team that got this going. The kid in the middle holding the robot showed up one day with a pamphlet. He said, hey, I want to do this. I didn't know anything about it. And we looked into it and started this off. And now 19 years later, we're still sticking it through. And that was last year at the competition, the kids that were at the finals. It's sponsored by the National Tooling and Machining Foundation, the NTMF. The idea was to promote STEM and interested manufacturing engineering because they realized, all these manufacturing companies in the Pittsburgh area realized everybody in their shops had white hair and they were going to be retiring. So they were anticipating this like retirement tsunami and said, we've got to get kids involved in manufacturing in some way. So they started the BOTS IQ program in Pittsburgh to kind of promote manufacturing. So because it's industry sponsored, Schroeder Industries sponsors us. Each team is sponsored by a company or two. Schroeder Industries has been our primary sponsor for the last 19 years. Ray Russell with Row Pro Design has also been a sponsor of us. With that industry sponsorship, they, one, we get money to kind of fund our program. So with most programs, you have to pay a registration fee. We get a grant every year from BOTS IQ participating in the program. Usually it's $250. Last year, we got one grant of $2,000 and another grant of $2,000. And just related to that, over the last couple of years, between materials that we've received, last year we got a titanium donation as well. It's probably around $20,000 with the titanium. And we've gotten over the years, so probably around $70,000 over the last 19 years of donations and grants and things from people. Schroeder offers us field trips. We're going to be going hopefully on the 19th of December. I just got word today that's the date. So I'm going to be giving you that paperwork shortly. Internships, we've had quite a few kids go through to do internships. Two of my guys were with Ray in Queensland, Australia, working at the university there, working on agricultural robots. They worked with Ray for a couple of years and now are mechanical engineers out in the field. Engineering consultations, so they're working back and forth with them with our robot. Machining, they have done a lot of machining for us. Water jetting, wire EDM work, stuff that we can't do at the house, we can send out and these companies take care of that for us. And the kids get to go and see some of this happening with job shadows, that type of thing while it's going on. And then jobs, we have one of our kids, well, two of our kids were working at Schroeder. One just got picked off by another company though. But Luke Lyons just started on the third, working at Schroeder. He wanted to, he always ran the CNC machine when we were over here in class and he loved doing that. And so he got in and hopefully he's going to start the apprenticeship with them. But he's currently working at Schroeder today based on that. We have kids that have gone on, like I said, we have guys that worked at NASA, they've worked at Raytheon, various engineering companies around. A lot of our kids go to engineering, but still working in manufacturing. So BOTS IQ is a team approach program. You can see, I have, kids can take the class for four years. The kids that are seniors are teaching the kids that are freshmen, some of the basic skills. And you see like working together for soldering and team design and building. So they kind of lead what they want to do for the year. I'm kind of there just to facilitate it and just make sure nothing silly is going on. But based on the last 19 years of what we've done, I can kind of guide them on mechanical things that don't work. So the goals of the program really is to design and build this robot and just to have fun in the grand scheme of it. And you can see like, we were at the Plum Invitational earlier this year. And we were at Community College Beaver County for their STEM Day. And we were there demonstrating the robots for BOTS IQ. We were representing them and our school. But there's the kids at the CCBC in the middle and then at the Plum Invitational. So things that you get out of BOTS IQ beyond just building the robot and design is the leadership, because the kids are kind of running the show and making sure that the. We have a three-ring binder. It's our engineering documentation binder. In that, we have social media and promotion of the team. We've got the drawings, all of the things that pertain to putting this project together. It goes into this binder. And it's all the kids doing that. So it's the time management, the organization, all that. It's all what the kids are getting. So they're employable skills that they don't normally get otherwise. Last little bit was the Program of Excellence Award. So the Technology Education Association of Pennsylvania, we were nominated to be the, one of the awardees this year, and we were chosen. So here's the plaque. We got it. It's official. This is based on providing a high-quality instruction in technology education and having a learner-centered program, which we have been doing here. And so some of the things that BOTS IQ, our engineering classes, Chuck Hoffnagle teaches the architectural design class. And one of his big things is the Playhouse Project, I think a lot of you are familiar with. But there's the couple of projects we've done over the years, the Lighthouse, the SpongeBob Pineapple, and last year they're fabbing out their Surf House. And the CVTV and Multimedia Program that Ray Antonelli runs, that was also part of our. He does a great job with the CVTV and putting highlights together in multimedia class. So that was all part of us getting this award. So. So we have, I had, girls have the robot from this last year and they're remodeling it for this upcoming season and documentation binder. So. Yeah, they named the King Go. Well, I didn't bring the robot. It's a little dangerous. It is an ankle biter, so it'll definitely take care.
Going to battle, there's like, what is it? 10 foot high plexiglass?
The arena's a 10 by 10 cube and about seven feet tall. And when you get hit with that blade, they usually fly all the way across the arena or hit the ceiling. It's routine. Like, and it's a half-inch poly, like bulletproof glass, the arena, and it's, things are ricocheting off and going through the glass. So it's exciting.
I'd just like to say, I had an opportunity through the years to be in your class and watch the kids work as a unit, as a team on these. And I think it's a fantastic class, which you run, and how the kids contribute. And again, working as a team, that's what's great about it.
That's the important thing.
So I think it's a fantastic class. I think that we have an opportunity to offer our kids here.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity. I like.
And you do a good job with it. You teach it.
It's fun. I like to participate with BOTS IQ. Like yesterday, we had the day off, but I taught an electronics course to the teachers and students down at the BOTS IQ office, just instructing on how to solder and put a circuit together. So it was like all the first-year teams who haven't fully learned how to do that yet. So we get back and we get things from them, like Free Cat software. It's kind of, I have a license for Onshape, and that's what we've been using for the last several years. And that comes through them because I, you know, we just paint with those guys on a lot of those things. It's a good program. It's about to good work. So.
Mr. Fiedler does a great job of empowering these students to take ownership of everything, and it really does pay off. He presented originally to us, like my first time, my younger son.
20 years ago.
The eighth grade. And I told him immediately, this is not my younger son, that he needed to get involved. This is a ninth grader, and he was mostly upperclassmen. But he was involved with it for four years, and that binder was his nemesis. Like, he loved it. Binder was his nemesis. It now pays off because he is an engineer with a startup company, and he's in charge of doing the planning and all these things. Part of it, that wasn't his favorite thing to do. He now sees them as. To him. So I can't thank Mr. Fiedler enough for the program he had.
Great job.
These kids move on to some great jobs from that program. So thank you.
Congratulations. Mr. Strakone?
Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight I have with us senior three-sport athlete, Adam Schroedz. Nominated Adam Schroedz for the Jerome Bettis Leadership Award. He is accompanied tonight with his parents, Kevin and Sherry. We nominated Kevin, or we nominated Adam for this award, and he was one of 11 athletes to get chosen for this Jerome Bettis Leadership Award. A little bit about this, student athletes have a unique opportunity to offer mentoring support to their peers, help them learn, grow on and off the field. Pittsburgh Steelers and the mentoring partnership are teaming up and have teamed up with the Post Gazette and Giant Eagle to present this Jerome Bettis Leadership Award, featuring high school football players from around the region who go above and beyond to provide mentor-like support for their teammates. We chose Adam because he is one of a very select few that actually plays three sports. His GPA is a 95%. Highest honors, he's been like that all throughout his high school career. What he will be given is an on-field celebration at a Steelers home football game, a $1,000 donation to the school's football program. And he's been recognized already throughout Steelers social media channels and of course, our, our social media channels as well. So congratulations.
I'd just like to say, I've had opportunity to watch Adam from a little youngster all the way to now playing all three sports. And being an ex-coach, you know, you say, you know, love to have a player leaves it out on the field. And he has done that in every sport he's played. He'll never cheat you. And he's given it his all and for his teammates and very, very deserving, you know. Well, I think, you know, the 95%, no, no, I think. Grandfather.
Good job, Adam.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
He's going to have to die.
I've been saying that. Yeah, nobody listens to me.
Minutes to approve the voting session minutes from the October 16th, 2025. Peasurers report, Mr. O'Neal.
Following bills and reports are submitted for approval. A bill is to confirm the October 2025 general fund payments in the amount of $2,220,086.69. Two to confirm the October 2025 cafeteria fund payment in the amount of $98,665.28. And number three to confirm the October 2025 construction fund payment in the amount of $26,996. Under B to approve the October 2025 Burckheimer report.
Questions? Agenda items, board policy. Number one, motion to approve a voluntary agreement with student number 2500021, per the terms and conditions subject to review and approval of the solicitor. Number two, to approve the articles of agreement between the Beaver County Career and Technology Center and the participating districts pending review by the solicitor. Number three, adoption of resolution number 2026-04, approving the incurrence of debt by the Board of School Directors of the Beaver Valley Intermediate Unit. Unit. Number 27, as the operating agent of the New Horizon School, pending review by the solicitor. Number four, to approve the PSBA Better Unemployment Compensation System, BUCS, program, to receive claims administration through Interstate Tax Services Incorporated, starting January 1st, 2026, for the remainder of the 2025-2026 school year at an annual cost prorated for the 2526 of $4.50 per employee. Number five, to approve resolution 2026-05, urging Pennsylvania General Assembly to end the state budget impasse. Well, you don't have to worry about that. Any questions? Negotiations, Mr. McDonald.
No items for this month.
Thank you. Education. Approve, confirm, the release time, staff development requests. In the chart, in the first column, you see the conferences and the location. Middle column, those individuals attending, and the third column, the dates of those workshops. Number two, to approve an agreement with St. Stevens Lutheran Academy to provide educational services for a Central Valley student at the rate of $60 a day while enrolled in a partial hospitalization. Questions? Technology, Mr. Moad.
Just one item to approve the master lease schedule of equipment with Apple for iPads and computers pending review by the solicitor. And just very quick synopsis, this is for iPads for all the students and staff, laptops for the staff at 0% financing. Cost stays basically the same. There's a negligible decrease in the cost actually. And the new lease won't have any impact on our borrowing power for the new bonds. So I don't know if Denise, is there anything else you want to add to that?
It's perfect. Any other questions? Athletics. Mr. Ross.
Number one, to approve the following winter coach and stipend pending receipt review and acceptance of all clearances. And that would be boys basketball, seventh grade. Boys basketball head coach, that would be David Kramer, at a salary of $1,250 a season. That's it, unless there's something else today?
Nothing further.
Okay. That's it.
Extracurricular activities, Mrs. DeSanto.
This is just an FYI for field trips. There's a chart with the destination, the group's purpose, and the date.
Thank you. Buildings and grounds, Mr. Anteline.
Prove and confirm the following building usage requests. You could see the building being requested, the organization, the dates, and the purpose on the chart. Thank you.
Thank you. So now items, Mr. O'Neal.
Under personnel, number one, to approve the resignation of Kathy Ellis, cafeteria worker, effective immediately. Number two, to approve the resignation of Kristen Apple, building monitor, effective immediately. Number three, to approve Jennifer Cumston as a prayer professional at the rate of $18 per hour in accordance with the CBESB agreement, pending receipt review and acceptance of all clearances, effective November 3, 2025. Number four, to approve the resignation of Hope Doubt Custodian, effective October 21, 2025. Number five, to approve Georgia Wall as a full-time second shift custodian at a rate in accordance with the CBESB agreement, pending receipt review and acceptance of all clearances, effective October 27, 2025. Number six, to approve Courtney Slezak as a building monitor, effective October 31, 2025, pending receipt review and acceptance of all clearances. Seven, to approve a maternity leave, exhausting all paid days followed by FMLA days, and then an unpaid leave for a middle school teacher. Employee ID number 1879, from honor about February 6, 2026, through honor about May 29, 2026. Number eight, to approve an extended unpaid leave for an elementary employee ID number 1923, from March 4, 2026, through April 7, 2026. Number nine, to approve an intermittent FMLA request for an elementary teacher, employee ID number 568, from November 1, 2025, to May 30, 2026. Number 10, to approve an intermittent FMLA request for an elementary teacher, employee ID 512, from November 1, 2025, to May 29, 2026. Do you have anything else?
Nothing further.
That's it then.
Finance, Mr. Ambrose.
I have nothing at this time. Denise, do you have anything there?
Hopefully the budget that got passed today can be implemented quickly.
Public comments, we don't have any public. So start with administrator.
High school.
Who's Mr. Bakova Can or Dr. Hartzell?
In high school on October 26th, members of the National Honor Society, along with other student volunteers, served as tour guides for the center class of 1975 as a part of their 50th anniversary. So a part of their reunion. On October 29th, Ms. Damp and Ms. Lombardi hosted the Oogie Spooky Cabaret and the High School Auditorium. It was a great turnout for that. I'd probably say, almost as nice as a musical as far as the turnout for that event. So we're very happy with that. Also, in the high school this year, we have two new clubs that were started. One was started with by Ms. Law, Mr. Antonelli, and Mr. Fiedler. And it's the Bill Code Fly Club. It's essentially a drone club. And we borrowed the drones from the BVIU. And students really had an interest in it. They came to us and said they wanted to start something with the drones. And so we're letting it fly. Also, Ms. Criswick started the Friendship is for Everyone Inclusive Club, aimed at our life skills students in her new position, which she is really excelling at. In efforts to improve attendance, we started an attendance honor roll that will be sent out to students and parents tomorrow, along with our academic honor roll. So those are part of the things that we talked about when we dealt with the comprehensive planning. So we're trying to implement a lot of those things that we discussed and put on the paper. We're trying to put them into effect this year. And finally, on November 20th, our school counselors will be taking our students on a college admission visit to RMU and Penn State Beaver to open their eyes to the possibilities that are out there for them. They're also going to do a similar trip to students to Pittsburgh. So they're going to be taking them to the University of Pittsburgh and probably a couple of other universities. A lot of our students, we found, just don't have the opportunities. Parents, in some cases, aren't able to take them on these types of visits. We thought it was a good idea. And again, part of the, again, part of the comprehensive planning things that we talked about, of how we can get our students out there and see what possibilities, like I said, are out there for them.
Thank you.
Mr. Bakova Can. Yes. I'd like to congratulate you, Dr. Hartzell, as well as Mrs. McCracken in her journalism class, for the first semester or the first 13 weeks, I think. The warrior way, another outstanding job.
We're like three or four years strong now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sansonetti, middle school.
October 27th through the 31st, our school is lucky enough to celebrate our Red Ribbon Week. During that event, we actually did a door decorating contest with all of our homerooms. Ms. Phil Castro was lucky enough to get to come in and be our guest judge, which we were very lucky to have. During that week, we also had all of our students sign a pledge to remain drug-free and to focus on finding natural highs in life, which was a huge success and the kids seemed to really enjoy. On top of that, our real schools boys football team became co-section champs and tied for that honor. November 5th, we were lucky enough to have a partnership with the Pittsburgh Steelers and Shell come into our school and talk about STEM with about 25 or different students. During that time, we actually had Arthur Moats got to come in, met with our students, along with different representatives from Shell, and talk about how STEM really affected their life and affected their career path. And they really seemed to get some positiveness from that. Coming up, December 5th is our annual Winterland Dance from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock. All the funds for this raise money for our local needy families, food throughout the holidays and throughout the school year. And then lastly, our annual Anderson's fundraiser sale for the holidays is coming up. It is going to actually start tomorrow and go through December 5th. The funds for that actually help raise money for our PBIS program and our end-of-the-year carnival. So if anyone wants any chocolates for anyone over the holidays, come to middle school. We love to have you buy some chocolate from us. And, you know, put forth good effort to hopefully keep doing the cool things we're doing there.
Thank you. Mrs. Brayden, Todd Lane.
Hi, everyone. So Todd Lane also recently celebrated Red Ribbon Week during the week of Halloween. Each day featured a special theme, encouraging the students to make smart, healthy choices. This week, we're also excited to celebrate Kindness Week. So again, that was part of the discussions that we had had in the comprehensive planning process to incorporate those sorts of things into the daily schedule. So this week is a time dedicated to just spreading positivity and compassion throughout the community. And the students are encouraged to take parts in acts of kindness. And on Friday, we'll be having an assembly. It's called Josh and Gab. They come in and they sing some fun songs about bullying and friendship and things like that. And it's a great way to get the kids involved. And it'll be a really nice way to sort of give Mrs. Ferragotti an exciting goodbye as well. So I have a little surprise planned for her. We also just wrapped up parent-teacher conferences. I'm happy to share that the feedback I received was overwhelmingly positive. Mrs. Hiltz, our guidance counselor, just began some lessons in the fifth grade with the Biz Town in preparation for the field trips that they'll be taking in spring. In addition, our hygiene drive is underway. So thanks to the efforts of Mrs. Amanda Paletti and one of our dedicated Todd Lane parents, the bags are being prepared for our students in need. And the response so far has been overwhelming. In fact, we had to move the supplies that we received from the original closet we had planned into a bigger area because we've gotten so many orders from the community. People are shipping things in from Amazon. So that's been really nice to see. And then finally, looking ahead, we're also organizing a food drive. Again, big thank you to Mrs. Paletti for heading this up. She and the rest of the SWBAS team are taking this on. We decided to do a food drive before Christmas break. Again, with everything that's been going on, we wanted to make sure that our families and, you know, Central Valley felt supported. So. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kusovitch, Center Grange. So at Center Grange, we ended the month of October with a very great Halloween parade and parties. And we're thankful to all the PTA volunteers that came to help with everyone. We had a great turnout at the parade. We had more people than we could even get in the front of the school this year was the biggest parade we've ever had. So it was really awesome. We also just did parent-teacher conferences. It was very, very positive. A lot of the parents were stopping in the office and saying how nice the school looked, and they hadn't all seen the new addition, which is, you know, two years old now, but some of them have never seen it. So they were really happy to see it. We are also celebrating World Kindness Day tomorrow at Center Grange, and we're all wearing our kindness shirts that our SWBAS, our SWBAS team has sold to the parents and the kids and the teachers. So they will be wearing their shirts tomorrow. And we also will be. And we also will be continuing our kindness theme throughout the week next week with a kindness week with, um, quotes over the PA system, um, letting the kids know about some things that they can do to show kindness to each other. We are also having Josh and Gab, just like, um, Todd Lane. Um, lots of fun, lots of energy, gets the kids up and moving. They love to have them and it's a very positive atmosphere for the kids to take part in. And we are also looking ahead to Christmas. Second grade is starting their practices for their Christmas show. So it's moving quick. Thank you.
Mrs. Park.
Good evening. Um, we have a lot of great activities going on in the world of special education here in Central Valley. Um, a few things that I'll highlight, uh, one, we talked a little past month about our pathways to partnership that, um, is going to be between us and Central, Central Valley, the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation and the Beaver County Rehabilitation Center. Um, we have eight students who are participating in those lessons and then that hold up with community-based instruction. So we've had two lessons so far. The students have gone out and visited different health and wellness facilities such as Brady's Run and some of the local fitness areas. Um, and then they also, um, got to trial public transportation as well. Um, our Center Grange team of teachers, they've been working really hard alongside our related service providers and they're doing a lot of great social skills to prepare some of our students with our most complex needs and how to get ready for some of the activities that go along with Halloween and Thanksgiving. Um, some of our friends in those areas have difficulty with changes in routine and understanding some of the different things that are happening. Um, so they've worked a lot on communication skills and how to, um, how to go about trick-or-treat and feeling diff- the different textures of pumpkins and things. Um, and then for Thanksgiving, they're going to have a balloons over Broadway parade, um, next Thursday in the afternoon at Center Grange, if anyone's available. The kids will make their Macy Day Parade balloon floats and we'll parade them around. Um, and then they'll practice what you do at a Thanksgiving dinner. Um, so it's a lot of work on behalf of the staff, but it's really great to see our students be able to be engaged in that. Um, in terms of Special Olympics, we had many staff members donate a lot of items to our Polar Plunge fundraiser between Center Grange and Todd Lane. Approximately $1,200 were raised for that. Um, I also like to thank the many staff members who gave their time to man the tables, um, to support that fundraiser as well. And speaking of Special Olympics, our annual Polar Plunge, we're recruiting team members for that. Um, that's going to be held on February 21st. There, I'd like to invite any community members who want to join our team. We always have a great overwhelming turnout. Um, and also there is a student registration that's free for students if they want to get together and enjoy the cau- um, support the cause there. All of the funds that we raised through that countywide program support a lot of the different funds, uh, programs that we have here. You heard, um, Mr. Vikovakan talk about the drone program. That's actually a unified program. Um, we also are going to be putting together our rosters for our high school Unified Botchi team. We have a Botchi team at Middle School and Todd Lane as well. Um, a Special Olympics bowling tournament is going to be held on December 4th for a lot of our students. Um, so there's a lot of great things that are supported through those fundraisers. In terms of gifted, um, we have students who will be attending the propaganda tournament that's going to take place next week. And on October 30th, we had a lot of students in grades five through eight participate in a mock trial event. So everyone's really busy and I appreciate all of the extra effort that our staff puts in to provide these extra opportunities for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chacon.
As our, uh, fall sports come to an end here, um, you know, just to make note, and I know you guys are all aware that, uh, football team will be playing at Montour, I mean, Christian in the semifinals, the WPL playoffs. Um, so good luck to Coach Lyons and the staff on that. Um, Friday actually starts winter sports, first official day of practice. It's hard to believe, um, that with the coaches and got them all squared away and ready to go. So, uh, things are moving pretty fast. Um, you know, already into November and, uh, rolling into Christmas break. Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Admiral is not here. Somebody come, just moving on. Mr. McCrory.
Um, just, just one comment, just to get one more time, welcome to Mrs. Brayden, as she's going to be taking over officially Monday at Todd Lane. So, welcome to your new role here.
Good luck. Good luck.
Good luck, yes.
Board member comments.
I'd just like to, uh, congratulate, and uh, a lot of our staff and it sounds like you guys are doing a great job with, uh, your buildings and a lot of good things are happening and at, at those buildings as of right now and, uh, hopefully it continues throughout the school year. And, uh, shout out to, uh, you know, I don't, I didn't hear, uh, Mr. Chacon mention it, but congratulations to the eighth, our eighth grade, uh, seventh, eighth grade program for what they're doing down there and, and our volleyball and our two girls, the girl, girl soccer coach, uh, and her team and his team and, uh, the boys. And now we have the football guys going in for the semifinals. So we're doing extremely well in our athletics department and, and also our academics. So I mean, putting two things like that together in a school district is very rare and hard to do and we're doing it. And you guys are to be commended for the work you guys are putting in, in, in your buildings and, uh, bringing these kids up. So we get guys like we saw today with Adam. You know, he started down there in that lower level, you know, and now he's up here and good things happen for, uh, good things are happening for him and, uh, and Mr. Feeder's program. Uh, that, that's a great program and good things are happening. I'm sure a lot of other, uh, curriculums that we have here, the same things are hap- but we don't always hear about it, but we did tonight with Mr. Feeder and, uh, and, and it was great to see Adam get the award he did. So, uh, we're doing a lot of great things here, uh. John, you know, we gotta keep it going now.
We gotta keep it going.
Gotta keep it going.
Yes, sir. I'd just like to, uh, on behalf of the board and our school district, uh, offer our deepest sympathy to Falco on the passing of his spouse. Okay. You're, you're our guy and just keep that head up, okay? Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
So I have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Ambrose, second. Mr. Moad, all in favor?